Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22nd Town Council Committee of the Whole. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Parker, who is attending the TBCCA meeting and will join us shortly. Calendar and Communications. Councilor Baumgartner.
Good evening. I recently attended a New England Fire District Open House. Also, this past weekend, attended a chili cook-off. It was very tasty, so thank you to our first -- local first responders and law enforcement who participated. And also attended a Groton City Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Franco.
I attended the Viprocation Committee meeting. We're making a little headway.
Counselor Heath.
So, Councilor Zepari and Councilor Schmidt, excuse me, and myself, attended the Personnel and Appointments Committee this past weekend. I attended the Sounds by the Sea performance by the high school bands, the marching bands. That was great. And then the chili cook-off, of course, it was delicious. And I also received several letters in favor of the Plastics Ordinance, including requests to consider a 10-cent paper bag fee.
Thank you. Counselor O'Gree.
Went to the chili cook-off, which was great. A lot of fun. And, other than that, just talking to people.
Counselor Portland.
Like Councilor Baumgartner, I also attended, I believe other people were there as well, the New England Fire District Open House. It was a wonderful event, and my kids are too old now and don't want to come with me anymore, but it's been going on for quite some time, and it's a great tradition. I also attended the town with Councilor Franco, the town Groton Police Promotion Ceremony. It was really inspiring and awesome to see so many officers being recognized for their service, and it was eye-opening once you get to hear each individual thing that they were being recognized for. So, if you haven't ever attended, I encourage you to. And on that same evening, we then traveled over to the Elks Club, and they had the law enforcement night, which was all surrounding towns were in attendance, and each department recognized an Officer of the Year. Another wonderful event. I attended the Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship. We had several recipients from Groton. I also attended the 244th Naval Birthday at the Nautilus. Another awesome, you know, thing to be at, and it's very fortunate -- very fortunate that the Westside Middle School Band is always asked to come to play for any of their ceremonies if they can fit into their schedule. So, that was a pleasure. I also attended the Fitch High School football game against Waterford, where I don't remember the score exactly, but Fitch won. That's the important part, so go Falcons. And also attended some cross-country meets at Westside Middle School.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt.
No report.
Counselor Zepari.
I was with Rita.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the Women in Defense Dinner, where they honored women that work, both at EB and all the contractors. It was heartening to see so many women in that field. Martin Luther King Scholarship Dinner, where Councilor Parker's daughter was honored with one of the scholarships. And Fitch had their band concert or their festival over the weekend, so that was very nice as well. Let's see. Approval of minutes. Counselor Baumgartner. 2019-676. This is on page two of the original packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of October 8, 2019. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion on the minutes from October 8, 2019? Counselor Franco.
On our packet, page five, in paragraph, I believe it's three. I would like it notated that I specifically inquired if we could wait until the project was announced and receive feedback prior to moving forward with the engineering and feasibility funding.
Could you, just because there's no one here taking minutes, is it the paragraph that begins, Mr. Bronk?
I believe that is, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Counselor O'Gree.
I think I'll take it up when we talk about the county job description.
Very good. Any other discussion on the minutes? Counselor Franco.
I believe this was also the meeting that Councilor Baumgartner had requested, the council to revisit a wage theft ordinance issue, or were we talking about it? Wasn't that the same meeting?
Counselor Baumgartner, do you recall?
Yes, but under new business.
That's, yeah, it's not in there.
Counselor Baumgartner, would you like that added to the minutes?
Sure.
Okay, and you requested it under, we just need to clarify this for the person who's going through the videotape, so. So, under new business, you would like your request?
But I understand that I requested a referral for the responsible contractor ordinance.
Correct.
However, I know there was, it needed the approval of at least three councilors, and that can be done through electronic transmittal mechanism as well.
Yes.
So, I guess were to be added to the record, that would suffice.
Thank you. That's very good.
No pressure to do so.
No, that's fine. It should be in there. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approval of the minutes of 2019-676, October 8, 2019, minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors. We are on to item 5A, 2019-678, Reclassify Vacant Roads and Street Maintainer Position to Equipment Operator, and this is in the packet that is separate from the rest. So, Counselor Franco.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the reclassification of the maintainer position to an equipment operator position. I assume move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Baumgartner, and we have Assistant Town Manager Zagami with us this evening, so would you like to give us some background on this? Would you have other town staff that would like to?
I'll be joined by Stacy, would you?
Thank you. If you could just introduce yourself when you come to the microphone, that way the people at home know who you are, please.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Hammond, I'm the Acting Assistant Director of Public Works, and I'm here to discuss the change of the maintainer position to equipment operator position in the Roads and Streets Division. So, currently, we have a vacated position for a maintainer, and we're asking to reclassify that as an equipment operator. No longer, a maintainer no longer really reflects the needs that we need. It's typically, we have a lot more equipment, and we'll also be adding on with the new school, additional 170,000, 170,000 square feet of plowing, so this individual will be able to plow with a five-yarder as opposed to a pickup truck, which will make us far more efficient. And the school system reimburses us for the paving costs.
Thank you. Mr. Zagami, did you want to discuss anything as far as the human resources aspect?
Sure. As far as the savings here, there's not really a bona fide savings upfront. When you switch over from the maintainer, which is lower pay, over to the equipment operator, it's going to be about, we wrote in the referral, it's about $3,515. And when you look at the subtracting, what you're going to actually save on the other side, it really comes down to about a $1,700 impact. However, you know, being restricted operationally by having, you know, a maintainer who cannot do a lot of the equipment that we need to have operating, that kind of restriction, and plus, there'll probably be some kind of savings with efficiency and overtime and et cetera. So, I think that, I think it's an excellent move to change these positions.
So, flexibility issue, then?
Flexibility, yes.
Thank you. Do any councilors have questions for Ms. Leach or Mr. Zagami? Counselor Portland.
Yes. Considering we just received this packet tonight and not having proper time to research or ask the questions in length and detail like one should, it's kind of hard, so I'm questioning the urgency. Is there a timeframe you guys are trying to meet to make sure this is changed, or is there time to look at this a little bit further?
Okay.
Currently, the position is empty, so we're short an individual, so we would need to, the plowing season technically starts November 15, so we're looking to fill a position prior to that, so that we have, that we're ready to go. So, we're kind of short-staffed.
So, the reclassification, then, is to prepare to hire, to do this position?
Right. There's no one currently in the maintainer position.
Are there other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll vote on 2019-678, Reclassify Vacant Roads and Streets Maintainer Position to Equipment Operator. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Bordelone. So moved. So, we are on to 2019-656, Working Leader Job Description. This is also Public Works. Counselor Heath, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the replacement of a transfer station foreman position with a working leader position, and approving the working leader job description. I assume move.
Is there a second? Everybody said it at once. Counselor Heath, moved, seconded by Franco. And we have Ms. Leach and Mr. Zagami.
Okay. Through attrition, we've had vacancy as the foreman position, as you've seen in the referral, at the transfer station. So, to increase the utilization of this position, we're requesting a change in the job description from a foreman to the transfer station working leader. This change will enable the position to operate Class A transfers, low boys, 318, which would be a giant excavator, and fill in for snow plowing. Within six months, we'd also have an expectation for that position to have a tank endorsement. So, what we're really looking for is to switch this almost to the level of a floor leader. And one of the things, I did not put in there a cost or anything like that, and I'll tell you the reason why. I have all of the steps that the floor leader has, and I'll pass those out, but the reason for that was, I wanted to eliminate some of the confusion. The current person in there, or the incumbent who was in there, was about, at about $70,000, and that was in the management position. Now, the floor leader has about seven steps with the union, so with all those additional steps, we would have the ability, according to what type of ability the person has, to match that salary with their, you know, with their qualifications. So, if I was to come up here and say, step one, I'm going to get that person and show a giant savings or something like that, I don't feel I'd be truthful. What we have to do is, in the recruiting stage, find out, you know, who's best for it. It's not just like training, let's get the cheapest person in there. We want to get the best qualified person, but we don't want to go overboard with it. So, that's basically where we're at.
Ms. Leach, did you want to add anything?
No, I think that's pretty, you know, the, I think, basically, the beginning step is approximately $60,000, and midway, it's about $67,000.
And if we, if we went, I'm sorry, if we went from where he was at $74,26 a year, annual, and we went to the union, we went all the way to step five, we would see $70,449. We're not looking to go to the fifth step up, but what I really think that would do, it just gives you a gauge of truthfulness of where we could be if we found the person who had that type of skill.
So, just to clarify, so then the range would be from like $60,000 on the low end, and you said step five, is that, how many steps are there, did you say?
To the step five would be about $70,000, but the...
There are two additional steps beyond that, correct?
There's actually three.
Three. Counselor Zepari.
I, I'm confused, because you indicated in this report that we have the request that he would be at a level 10. What do you mean by a level 10?
Level...
So...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
Level 10 is just, that just counts down to what level the position sits at.
It still doesn't clarify it for me.
Well, the lower level positions, like maintainer and those, may be number four, and then you come down to equipment operator would be higher, and then as you go down, they're just numbered like that, but that's, but the actual pay is across the board.
Okay.
But the lower, as you go down the page, that's where it becomes, you know, where you get your actual rate for the position name.
It's a more skilled position.
And I have these to pass out, too.
Okay. And what's the difference between a foreman and a working leader?
Well, the working leader has, he'd be a union position as opposed to the foreman, was a management, non-union position. When you go into being a, the union floor leader position, which is equivalent to, that gives him the ability to do all of the tasks, driving trucks, et cetera, that the person who was the foreman would not be able to do, because that would be union work.
What was the foreman paid?
The foreman was paid $70,426.
And what will this, the working leader be paid?
That could be a range, I've got the hourly rates would be, which would be like $29,000 on the first, and if we would, if we set $29 on the first, so if he was at step one, he'd be $60,444 if you went on 2,080 hours. If you went up to step four, it would be about $67,7. If you went up to step five, which I was just trying to take some of these readings, a step five would come up to $74,49. So, if you look at step five, which is really way up to the midpoint, you're pretty close, almost right exactly where he was when he was employed.
And what do we lose by losing a foreman?
You won't lose anything, because what we'll do is, some of the work that's clerical and paperwork, reports and things like that, will be transferred over to a street foreman, who is a non, well, he's actually a different union, but he will be taking over those, those pieces of work. But it's just that we find that we need more work on the physical side than we need on the clerical side.
Thank you.
Mr. Zagami, do you have those sheets that you could pass to the council, that we could take a look at those, please?
Yes.
Thank you. We have Counselor Heath and then Bordelone.
Oh, no, I forgot my question. Go ahead and come back to me.
We'll come back to Counselor Bordelone.
Yes. Once again, it's extremely hard to make a proper decision on something without having that scale. We get these packets in advance, and for time purposes, as a non-paid position, as a volunteer, as we sit up here, you know, you allot the time to go through them, so it'd be very helpful in future to have those pay scales, so that I can measure those against, you know, comparable wage, you know, wages, and be able to make a fair assessment on this. A level 10 doesn't mean anything to me, and it, there's nothing to support it, so I'm having trouble to, I see your rationale, and I respect it, but I, I'm having trouble to see, without proper documentation in front of me, to make an informed decision on behalf of the town. With that, with looking at Public Works, I hope that we're moving towards looking at only the job description as a whole, but really trying to hire people that we currently, you know, don't have many people with environmental backgrounds as well. So, if this is going to be a job leader in Public Works, I guess I would like to see the environmental aspect of being able to manage a group of people in the town moving forward as a coastal community that has that kind of credentialing. Is that, has that been thought of?
Well, this would be in solid waste, and part of the job description requires them to go to the Department of Environmental Protection and be certified as a volume reduction and transfer station operator, so that incorporates all the environmental requirements. They also will be required to operate the transfer station within our permit that we have there. They're going to have to be familiar with that as well. In the, the job classification is really something that, the job description is, we kind of mimicked what we've done at Park Maintenance with, and the floor leader in the past, recently as well.
So, can we get those pay scales, so I can look at those?
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you. Counselor Heath.
So, the previous person left.
Correct.
Right. And so, this position right now is vacant?
Correct.
Okay. Do you already have someone identified for the position?
No, this would have to be advertised, and then it would be interviewed. So, then it would be, we'd go from there.
So, the purpose is to give you more flexibility?
It would give us more flexibility, because the person would be able to operate equipment as well.
And then the last one, were there any other vacancies in that, at the transfer station? Are we fully staffed?
No. There's no other, we had reduced the number of employees previously, but yes, we're fully staffed, other than the fact that we don't have a foreman, so we have two employees out there at this time.
So, in looking at the paper that you just distributed to us, the transfer station foreman position, what is the title on here?
I also have...
Does it have a different name?
This would be, he's a fellow of a different union.
Okay.
He was non-union, so before, where was that?
Thank you.
Can I give you his salary, what he was making at the time?
Right. All right, so he's on here as the transfer station foreman?
You'll see him as foreman.
Transfer station, there he is.
Yeah, there he is.
Okay. So, it's about a third from the bottom. On the two-page sheet, it says foreman, transfer station, and the minimum entry rate is $65,387, maximum $75, maximum salary $82.
He was here for about 40 years.
Okay. Are there questions? Hold on one minute. Counselor Bordelone, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak before we go back again? Counselor O'Gree.
Okay, so what you're saying is, the gentleman that was there was not union?
Yes.
And how the person that will replace him will become union?
They will be a union person, yes.
Okay. Now, are you also saying that by this change, they'll have more flexibility as to what they can do under the union?
Absolutely, which is a unique situation, but moving a lot of the equipment there, the excavators, being able to load tractor...
No, I, I understand that, but it's kind of unusual, because usually, when you're a union, you have a specific job, and they won't let you, you know, do other things. But that's not the case with this. With this, there's going to be flexibility.
There'll be flexibility, and that's what I negotiated with union.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Counselor Franco.
Can you clarify exactly on the first sheet you handed out, this is where the work leader?
Floor leader. Down the second from Bordelone.
Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Counselor Bordelone, back to you.
Just once again, there's a lot of tables and numbers here to make an informed decision. It would just be very helpful to have these up front in advance. It's hard for me to, you know, on live camera, read all this over and really understand what you're asking. Is there a possibility, I don't even know what the correct procedure would be, as I'm new up here and learning, can this be tabled to the next meeting and not be voted on tonight, so we have time to review these documents?
So, let's double-check and see if there's an urgent need for this, as was with the last one.
Just to have...
Well, there is a vacancy there, and it's at the transfer station, so we would be, you know, it would seem to me it would be more fruitful to fill that position or start recruiting. I wouldn't want my recruiting to run up against holidays, because then recruiting becomes very difficult.
Right. So, how long has this position been vacant?
A couple of weeks, maybe.
So, a couple of weeks, okay. And, so could you, I'm guessing, one could start to hire under the original set and look for the skill sets of all the other aspects that you're looking for, to allow us time to review these salaries and numbers to make an informed decision? You could still, you know, move forward.
You're saying to put out a posting for the primary job that we just changed it from?
Or what your original plan was, or what we're changing tonight, because, like I said, I'm going to have trouble voting on this, because I'm having, I would like more time to read, is all.
Well, let me just say this. The reason why I did that was to avoid all of this, you know, looking over at big tables and trying to compare them. What I was able to do, too, was to be able to show the cost and differences right in front of you in a matter of minutes, as opposed to you having to sort through all this. That was my, you know, that was really my primary goal. And I didn't want anybody to think that we were going to step one. If people thought we automatically go to step one, they might think right away that we're trying to say, well, we're pulling something over on them, that we're saying we're going to get this big savings, you know, from, say, $10,000 worth of savings, because we went to step one as a floor leader. Not the case. What I outlined pretty clearly, I think I articulated well, was to say what was going to, what the possibility was to go out to step five, what it could be, what the person who was in the step was making. So, I think that was, you know, and besides, the floor leader has been negotiated with the union, and those, those contracts have been approved by the council.
Counselor O'Gree.
It would seem to me that the important thing here is that we, first of all, we need to move forward. But the second thing is, we're changing it so, to me, it's a better position. You have somebody that can do more than the previous person, and if there's anything that makes things more efficient, to me, is somebody that can get onto this equipment, or get onto this equipment, or move this part of it forward. And that's basically what we're talking about here. And I, I think it's an excellent step. I'm very pleased that you were able to negotiate that with the, with the union. It's unusual, and I think it's to our advantage. The pay is going to be by the ability of the person. So, I think this is an excellent move forward, for what it's worth.
Is there any other discussion on 2019-656? Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Counselor Bordelone.
Thank you. With all respect, I'm in full support of unions. That's not the issue, and not the backdrop of your, you know, your attempts to get this ready and prepared. My concern is when I'm asking for, you know, I'm a person that's very transparent, and so for me to properly prepare for something, there's two Public Works things that came before us tonight that I did not have in advance to, to review. So, it's not a matter of the lack of changing it from one position to another, it's giving me the proper time to review these items, to make a proper decision that is involving taxpayers' dollars and having proper transparency. That, that is my concern, not the position moving or how we would get there. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on 2019-656, Working Leader Job Description. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Bordelone. And I think that's it for Ms. Leach, correct? I just wanted to say thank you for all your work with the chief selectees as well. You do an excellent job with rounding them up and employing them for the benefit of the town, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We are on to Accountant Job Description. This is 2019-675, on page 12 in your packet, and I believe we are on, Counselor O'Gree?
Page 12. Motion to recommend a resolution to approve the updated accountant job description. I assume move.
Second.
Moved by O'Gree and seconded by Franco. Mr. Zagami.
Sure. Okay. In the accountant position, while currently, we have a vacancy here in the... The position of accountant, with that, we're requesting that the year 2000 job description be revised to reflect the responsibilities that's carried out today. What we find is that in this background was basically a lot of payroll-written information, but we want this to be bona fide accounting. So, the plain payroll has really been lowered, what we have there, and this is moved more to general accounting. And with general accounting comes budget, maintaining the ledges, AP, AR, cash, investment... And with general accounting comes budget, maintaining the ledges, AP, AR, cash, investments, and then a limited amount of work on payroll. So what I had here is the accountant, who was the incumbent who left, was making seventy-two thousand eight hundred eighty-three. That's what they were making. So I also have for GMEA, my line item here, because I wanted to show you that it could be well across this chart here of how much this job may cost us to fill. So I've also wanted to pass that out to...
If you could do that at the start, that would be most helpful, thank you. To understand this individual already had benefits, and they're increasing their hours, five hours, to take them up, and changing the job description to more general budgeting and accounting, rather than just payroll. Do we have questions for Mr. Zagami on the accountant job description? Council O'Bree?
Yeah, I had a question, I don't know if it's really pertinent to this, but it is to me. Under your physical demands, now, there's probably a reason for it, but why would you ask an employee to crawl?
That's just a generic one we've used over the years.
Can we get rid of that?
There might be a possibility, it could also come to, if there was a fire or something like that, and you had to crawl out of the place, that would be, you know, an instance of emergency.
That wouldn't be part of their job, though.
Well, we wouldn't have a fire every day, it's a part of your job either.
Well, I think it's, I think it's not appropriate.
Well, I don't have any problem with checking that out and seeing if that, if that could be eliminated, I don't...
I would appreciate that, because to me, it's very demoralizing to say to somebody, oh, read this over, and don't forget, now you gotta crouch or crawl. Really?
Well, if the accountant loses a pencil under the desk, does he have to call someone qualified to call to get it?
Mr. Zagami, so you have no issue with investigating whether that can be removed from the job description?
Of course not, it's a good point.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Are there any other questions about the change in job description? Council Zepary?
What is the level three? Now, we had an equipment operator leader is a level ten, and this is the level three. I think we're working on a different scale?
He does have that.
Yeah, I do have that. I'm trying to get these papers together real quick.
I'm sorry. If you want to just hand them to Council Bumgardner, then you can pass them down the line for us, if you have the things printed.
I don't have enough copies on.
Oh, you don't, okay.
But I do have a few copies.
Alright.
I need the copies, I don't know where they are.
Must be sharing.
You guys want to share? They don't have enough copies.
So accountant level three, it's yours, here. So are we looking at accountant level three, sixty-seven thousand?
Right.
To seventy-seven thousand?
It starts with sixty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-three, and it ends at seventy-seven, three forty-four. And the current person was making seventy-two eight eighty-three.
Okay, so there's a ten thousand dollar range, based on experience of the candidate that you choose to hire?
Yes.
Thank you. Do any of you have questions for Mr. Zagami on the pay scale? Council Parker, we are on 2019-675. Council Boarder?
Thank you. Once again, I just don't want to sound redundant, or rude, or disrespectful, but for full transparency purposes, and newly sitting up here and having to vote on things on behalf of everyone, I do find it extremely frustrating to, once again, just receive the chart and have to make a decision on a vote tonight, when I didn't have a chance to review it.
Council Franco?
So in our packet here, it says the education and experience requirements for this job description will remain the same, as will the pay grade. So we're basically just changing the job description. That's all we're changing.
Yeah, basically, what we're really doing is taking out the payroll piece. That's basically the most straightforward.
The payroll emphasis, right. So there's somebody else that, basically, that's their position, that they focus on.
We have a payroll person.
Right, so this person, whoever is hired, will not have to worry so much about payroll, it'll be more just simply on the accounting side of things.
Right, but when that job was first, probably back in 2000, when that job description was made, at that point, there was probably a concern that they'd be doing some payroll work. Through the years, you know, the way things have changed, reporting and everything, with the auditors and such, you get so much more accounting that's gotta come in, play, and naturally, be more cost-effective and efficient. You're always looking at numbers, so the number of reports and everything has really grown.
So it's just simply the job description and the actual pay will not change at all, so we really don't even need to see what the pay scale is then?
You really don't, there's a range, I'm sorry.
When you're taking in consideration, we're basically just changing the job description, not the pay range.
That's right. And I just wanted to put in there, in the mid-range, that that person was in there, was making seventy-two eight eighty-three. I just thought, my information usually, when I brought to the council, I usually bring the range that they can make the money at. And then I like to tell who made what, when. But I want to make sure that people don't think that, oh, I can go to step one and save a ton of money. Then we start recruiting, and we've already told you that we're gonna save all that money on step one, I think it's more fair to put the whole range out there. But the rest of that piece of paper really doesn't mean anything as much as that one line does.
Gotcha.
Very good.
And the, so although the payroll emphasis will be taken away, their time will be full with a lot of other accounting duties.
Absolutely.
And so they'll be fully busy.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this particular item? Council Boarder?
Yes, one more thing, I also wanted to say, I do agree with Council O'Bree on that crawling description, as well as, we have a lot of positions that are vacant, and I just hope that we are looking to maybe get female in public, some females in public works, and some minority recruiting in these positions that are opening. As I discussed at the last meeting, I know that our municipality, as far as our town office, does not reflect the demographics in which it serves. So I do not see anything written on this job description stating that you guys are equal opportunity or minority recruiting heavily, because we have a lack of that. So is that possibly gonna be added?
No, that never goes on the job description.
Correct, but is there any emphasis in trying?
We do that in our ads. And also, we do, we do put out the same forms as everybody else, that you get to send back stating race, et cetera, creating all of that. Those things don't come back, they just about never come back.
It's not about race as well, it's also gender equality as well, making sure women are getting...
There's a cod felt by EEOC that we utilize, but that really doesn't come back. They probably, on the other end, people may think, jeez, if I send this back, and I'm Italian-American, or whatever it is, maybe they're not gonna like me, or something like that, let me just go on, on my resume. But we are, you know, as I've told you before on the last meeting, I don't know if you remember, but I was telling you about some of the things we are doing to look at this more aggressively.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-675, accountant job description. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, we are at nine councilors. Thank you, Mr. Zagami. We are on to 2018-2242, Conservation Commission Single Use Plastic Reduction Update. This is on page sixteen. And just, so how this is gonna work this evening, we will have a presentation. We have members of the Conservation Commission here, members of the planning staff, including Mr. Lougherty and Mr. Reiner. And we have a series of seven questions that we need to decide tonight. Once we vote on each of the seven items, I will recommend a resolution based on the outcome of the votes of those seven items to be presented at our council meeting in November. Hello, gentlemen, if you'd like to all just introduce yourselves, and I just urge you to please use the microphone, that way we can hear the, people at home can hear you rather. So whoever wants to start?
Larry Dunn, Vice Chair of the Council Commission.
Ray Rafferty, Chair of the Conservation Commission.
John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Bruce Lougherty, Planner One.
So, thank you, good evening. We wanted to give an overview of kind of where we are in the process for plastic bag reduction. The Conservation Commission will give an overview of the outreach effort that they've done last month, as well as some of the recommendations that they have moving forward from their last meeting. And then we can circle back and talk about the kind of decision points and the direction that we need from the Town Council tonight in order to make revisions to any potential ordinance or regulation detailing plastic. So with that, I'll hand it over to members of the Conservation Commission.
Thanks. What I'd like to talk to is, number one, is a review of the plastic forum that we held the other week. That was at the request of the Town Council. Then I would like to kind of reiterate very briefly the survey we did back in first quarter, which covered a broader scope of people along the same topic. And then go into a small, one brief chart on the economics of the change that's going on, and the alternatives that are there. And then finally, the recommendations that came out of the commission as a result of the work we've been doing over the last year. Alright, so at the forum, there was about a hundred folks there, which, in the driving rain, which I thought was pretty good. And I would say that there was a number of events or tables that were there, covering the environmental impact, recycling, public health, economic impact, alternative solutions, ordinances. We also had Big Y, Mystic Aquarium, and compostable bags and waste division attendee at the tables. We had two speakers. I know now more about bi-valve treatment, how they use microplastics than I ever thought I would know. And we also had a talk on individuals' experience in plastic, how it affecting the environment. One of the things that we did was, we gave everyone three green stickers and three red stickers. So that's why the numbers don't quite add up. Interesting note on it is, the only negative votes were on the fees on paper bags. I'll get to that in a little bit. And the largest votes in terms of yes is the polystyrene trays, which I thought was also interesting. So that was, that was the forum. If there's no questions on that, I will go and just do a brief revisit. We did do a public survey, and we got four hundred and eighty-three respondents on that. During that, we also went out and did a personal collection of additional ones from specifically businesses. So we wound up, you know, adding another twenty to that, so we had sixty-eight businesses and four hundred and fifteen residents. Now, when you look at the, real quick on the results to remind you of it, there was a very positive response to reduce single-use plastics. Sixty-three percent of the businesses have noticed, a third of the businesses were already doing it. Seventy-two percent of the residents responded very much and are committed to reducing the single-use plastics. So I just wanted to remind you of that. We also gave the opportunity for comments of the responders on the comments. Eighty percent were positive, fourteen percent were negative. It had mostly to do with interference in my life by government versus anything what I would call substantive on plastic versus paper versus something else. Six percent did say they wanted more education, and we actually had the forums, and we kind of hooked out on that one. Briefly, and I don't want to belabor this, but it's really tough to get some true numbers on what the economics is, but I just wanted to point out two things. One is that when you look at the cost to a business of any of these single-use items, and you look at the cost to us as taxpayers and residents, and in fact, the town, in every instance, we are subsidizing the business, in terms of the true cost of that single-use item. The closest is probably paper bags. Now, that does not include the things of the marine impact, health, tourism, ocean cleanup, other things. So it just gets towards, so this is actually a very conservative estimate of the subsidy that we're doing. So in general, when you look around the world, more in Europe, they're passing laws that require manufacturers of goods to pay the total cost, you know, as part of their product, and not pass it on for a secondary source in terms of taxpayers, et cetera. And then, for example, the elimination of plastic bags from the town of Groton, just the budget, is gonna save probably, well, almost eighty tons of trash, which amounts to about six thousand dollars in tip fees alone. So there is some savings right off the bat in terms of the elimination of the single-use plastic bags. Any questions on that? There's a lot, very complicated chart, yep.
I'm sorry, did you say this, these are estimate?
These are from, there's from a variety of sources. It's from studies that have been done by others, what I would call ocean towns and cities. It's been studies done by the government, studies in terms of, for example, the impact on fisheries, et cetera. That one kind of surprised me. Why does the cost of fish go up because of plastic bags? Well, because the trawlers and everyone out there, the plastic bags get in the propellers, they have to shut down operations to clean it out, et cetera, et cetera. So the fish we're paying for is, you know, five percent by their, this was a European study, five percent more cost. So there's a lot of hidden costs that we don't see, when you just talk about, oh gee, the bag only costs a cent and a half. No, the bag actually costs more like twelve cents. San Francisco study said that it cost them seventeen cents. So you get different numbers from different studies. And that's partly why this is difficult, this is at the beginning stages, when the full impact of this plastic in the environment is occurring. We won't know, alright? One study that's been done that said ninety-four percent of the drinking water that we, in the United States, has microplastics in it. What's the impact of that? We don't know, other than, I think it was what, a credit card's worth of plastic we ingest every month. So, doesn't sound good to me, but, so, but we just don't know some of the costs that are there. That's all I meant by that.
And these are the most recent studies, within the last two or three years, or how long ago were these studies?
The studies range from, pretty, yes, in the last five years. Yep. Yep, okay. Alright, into the, so we took all that prior information, and then we had some luncheon discussions at our last session, and basically came up with these recommendations that we're inputting to the planning staff for their consideration, and to you. The first is that we would like to accelerate single-use plastic bags that the Connecticut State has put into effect. They stretched it out, trying to get more tax dollars out of the ten cents per bag. We think that the effect of accelerating that to six months after you pass an ordinance would be beneficial to the town and the environment. And in a lot of cases, it's pretty much almost already there. Second one is single-use plastic straws. We recommend that that be included in the ban, and again, effective six months later. Plastic stirrers to be included, and polystyrene cups and trays be included in ban six months after the adoption. We are recommending that plastic cutlery should not be included at this time. Need some additional work and consideration. We also recommend not including a fee on paper bags, that has been done in a lot of other locations. But we think it should be revisited a later date. From a cost point of view, if you recall the prior page, that's almost fully recovered, because it's easier to recapture the energy out of the paper bag. The littering effect goes down, because it disintegrates so quickly, so that the cost impact of the paper isn't there. And we'd like to look at that a little longer to see how it is. Obviously, reuse, you know, cloth bags, where you buy one every three, four, five, six years, is obviously the best solution. But we wanted to do this on an incremental fashion, and that's why we are recommending a delay on those two items.
Senator, did you want to add anything?
That's it.
So at this time, we would be looking to the Town Council for some direction on some of these policy items? some of these policy items and how we move forward in revising the draft ordinance that we had put together before. We have a general framework, but, you know, really, the first question here is, should the ordinance include any type of regulation on single-use plastic bags? The state ban goes into effect July 2021. Is that something you wanted to do sooner than July 2021?
Okay, so that's the first question on the list. And as I said earlier, we'll go through and we'll vote on each of the seven questions. So we'll have seven separate votes. So does anyone have questions? Counselor Bordelone?
Yeah, I just had one question. Have we, not just the businesses, but have we spoken to the schools? I know they are a large consumer of Styrofoam trays, plastic utensils, straws. Have we maybe arranged any meetings with them to, you know, kind of better prepare them possibly?
Well, the only thing is, I know that, that we've got different school systems. So from the state perspective, those are, would not be affected by the ordinance. So that's, that's one aspect. And I, we have not talked to the schools in terms of the impact. From a cost point of view, I suppose that would be the first question they would ask. I think I had in there...
I'm just going to jump in here and say that they were made aware that we were working on this study, and I have not heard anything back from them.
I guess it would be interesting, I'd be, I'd love to see the data on how many they use per day even, you know, between all the schools in the town. And it would be, I just think of them as using a lot of these items, and eliminating those would be a huge benefit to the town, not only for the town, but for the student's health, because eating on Styrofoam trays with hot food is a health concern as a whole. So I just, anyway.
Counselor Franco.
All right, I have a few questions here. On the styrofoam cups and trays, what do you, you're stating trays. Are you specifically talking about takeout containers and, like the clamshell takeout containers?
So, so what I would like to do is to run this one question at a time, and then when we get to the polystyrene, we can get to that. But right now, I'd like to take it through...
It's even in their presentation.
Right. So you're questioning the presentation or the questions? Because I want to get votes, we need to get votes tonight on each of the seven questions. So...
Okay. No, I'm specifically, they put it in their presentation.
Asking about the presentation. So she's referring to the presentation right now.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
In your presentation, it says the Styrofoam cups and trays are included and banned effective six months. So when you're stating trays, are those considered takeout containers, like the clamshell takeout containers? Is that what you're stating?
Yes, I mean, right. The answer is yes. That's the most of it. There's not very many of the trays other than the school systems, but, but most of the businesses really have the clamshells.
Okay, because I'm just, it's not specifically stated there. Also, in the, when it came to the dollar amounts, so my concern, one of them will be the plastic straws moving over to paper straws, and the styrene cups moving over to paper cups, is if you have a large corporate business in town, let's just say such as a McDonald's or a Dunkin' Donuts, where probably you could go through 10,000 cups in a week, do you think that their supply chain and the pipeline for their corporate, because it, maybe their orders come from a corporate office somewhere else and they get shipped here or whatever, that they're going to be able to take care of all of this in a six-month period and to move over to this after, through their purchasing supply?
The ones you mentioned, I believe, are already using paper. So I think that, I mean, I know you said as example, you said Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks and a lot of the major chains, because of the laws in California and some other states, their supply chains are already moving over to the paper cups. So it is readjusting, so the answer to your question is yes, then six months is for that aspect. Straws is a little tougher because the supply chain's a little tighter.
Can I just interrupt? I'm sorry. So you're saying, like, maybe out in California, they're doing paper, so that you think that, that may be the northeast distribution hub?
What I'm saying is that, that the corporate enterprises, they like to standardize their supply chains. And the same way that California sets the stage on admissions and other things, that's been going across the company. So they've already started that shift because California is a very large market, and so they go for, you know, volume on getting the best deal. So they've been doing paper cups across the country for a while.
Right. So if Little Groton says to the corporation...
They get their supplies from the corporation. They don't buy it separately.
Right, that's why, I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, New England is probably a district for these corporations.
Correct.
It's not nation, like, they probably have hubs where maybe they have distribution. And that distribution maybe sends out to, like, New England or to a certain area. Do you think that pipeline will be able to get just Groton in their pipeline into paper very quickly, even if they don't change the rest of their supply?
Yeah, they will be, they will be changing it on a regional basis and are already doing it. So they don't select a certain area and give them a very specific skew for a cup because it costs them more money to manage that. So, yes, they're changing over to paper cups nationwide as a result of the...
So if New England is not scheduled to be changed over to paper in the next six months on a, on a cup, let's just say for Dunkin' Donuts.
I believe they're already there.
How are they going to be able to take care of Groton and their whole pipeline? That's what I'm trying to ask. Like, is it, does it make sense that in their whole pipeline, they can change us in six months?
Well, it wouldn't just be Groton. The number of, about, I think, seven, eight towns are, already have done it in Connecticut. So it's not just Groton. We are lagging other towns in Connecticut. So the supply chains for those paper products are significantly increasing. And so I, you know, I don't see an issue with it. I mean, each company, we'd have to ask specifically, but...
So the other towns in Connecticut?
There's other towns in Connecticut that have gone, yes.
That are doing this, and they're having no problems? And they're also including, like, the big box chains?
Yep.
Corporations?
Yes.
Okay. And have we contacted any of those type of businesses by any chance?
We've talked...
Just to see. I don't want to put it, I don't want to...
Okay. Well, they sent me an article, Dunkin' Donuts is eliminating foam cups globally by 2020. Groton, I think, is included in that. But, so, we are going, we have talked to some of the towns around, and quite frankly, the reaction from the citizens have been very positive. I mean, it's been...
No, I understand, I'm in favor of this.
And the businesses as well.
I'm just asking if the timeline is the proper timeline to have it go through a pipeline, is what I'm asking.
The answer is yes. That's why we suggested the six months, to give enough time to use, really, it's to use up the old inventory, not necessarily because of a pipeline issue.
So McDonald's is changing over to paper straws as well?
I can't, well, you asked paper straws McDonald's. I don't mean that specifically.
We haven't gone to each one of the mass produce, mass food, for instance, to talk about the mechanisms in there. One of the reasons that we're proposing the six-month ban, grace period, if you will, before we kick in, is because there are a lot of other towns, not statewide yet, but towns who have already enacted this. So the mechanisms are in place, and the companies see this coming. And from what I've gathered from the research that I've done, without actually talking to the contractors, is that they're ready to go. And so if, as the plastic bag by the state was instituted August 1st with a two-year grace period before it's actually eliminated, I, if you go around to different businesses, you start to see those changes already taking place. And there's been no ordinances, let's say, to make incentive, but rather they see what's, what's coming. So as far as straws are concerned, for instance, it could be that McDonald's hasn't changed it because they have such a backlog. You know, it's coming, but they haven't reached that point in the supply chain to actually make that switch.
Yeah, and that's why I'm questioning, do you think the six months would be good for McDonald's to say, we can do paper?
Yes.
Straws?
Yes.
Or a cup, or a big box that has Styrofoam, something they can switch over that quickly? That's what I wanted to know.
Right. And we're not eliminating plastic straws because if you want them, you still can go to Stop and Shop and buy your own straws.
Right.
So it's not as though we're eliminating plastic straws.
No, I understand that. I've been following it very closely. I understand that. I just want to make sure that the timeline is proper. Thank you.
Okay. I want to take this back to the order that we have these questions here, and everybody will get to ask their questions when we get to that particular topic, please. So the very first topic is the single-use plastic bags. So do we have questions on the single-use plastic bags at this point? We're going to tick these off one at a time. So the question is, should the ordinance include a regulation of single-use plastic bags? Are there questions on that particular item, please? Counselor Bordelone?
I don't have a particular question about it, but I was approached by it. So I think for full disclosure, to make sure it's on camber with the answer, would be helpful. Some people were asking, will their produce, produce bags be part of the single-use bag ban?
It was not the intent to have produce bags be part of the single bag ban. So, no.
Any other questions on the plastic bag question? Okay, seeing no questions on that, so we're going to, again, vote on each one of these seven items. So all those in favor of an ordinance including a regulation of single-use plastic bags as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. That one's moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to the question on, should the ordinance include a regulation of plastic straws? So are there questions on plastic straws at this point? Counselor Parker?
I'm sorry, did you say you didn't talk to the big corporations yet?
We have not talked to corporate offices. We have talked to local, you know, the Big Y, local Big Y we talked. We didn't talk to corporate Big Y, right? And in fact, local Big Y is making it part of their shtick, right, that they're advertising, marketing, et cetera.
I get that, but that was, that was my concern months ago when we were discussing this. We should have been reaching out to corporations also to let them know what's coming down the pipeline. And this concern is, if they're not, can't do it in six months. So is there a way we can have an extension on it, just in case? If the big corporation businesses can't do it in a timely manner, we're going to implement a fee, if I'm remembering correctly. Is that what we're going to do?
We haven't gotten to that item. That's one of the seven questions. There's a fee.
That's not, that's on the paper bags. That doesn't say that in there.
That's not part of the...
It's not part of this.
So we can include that if you would like?
I, I believe, because since we haven't talked to, we talked to only local businesses and not corporations, we probably should have had...
To be fully fair, I have no intention of going to the corporate office because they will not take our call. So, I mean, you're talking about mega-billion-dollar corporations. They have their plans, and, you know, they're, like I said, most of them are already responding to this. But our, our input is not going to drive them, given, as you said, Little Groton is not going to drive a corporation. They're going to do it because of the accumulation of all the town ordinances and the state ordinances that are going around the country. That's why they're moving in that direction, not because of us specifically. So I think that would not be, you know, a good investment of our time. Now, talking to the local stores that are part of those chains, we have done, right? And that's the, you know, the third that said they already done it, and the 60x percent, 63% I think it was, that says they will do it.
Counselor Bordelone, and then Franco.
So as far as the timeframe on this, I'm more concerned with the local business than the corporations, because they have a much larger overhead and are implementing it in different states. But would there be possibly a grace period for the local level, a small mom-and-pop shop that might, you know, not be able to meet it and might need nine months, let's just say? Would there be a possibility, if they hit that six months, that they could get a three-month extension for the local? Like with, you know, obviously would be moving towards, but I'm more concerned with the local shops that want to move, but, you know, that, the corporations, I think, have way more overhead money to make this implement, you know, make it happen.
So we are happy to craft this ordinance however you would like us to craft it. I don't mean to be short or anything else. We're looking for direction from all of you on how you want us to put this ordinance together. We're happy to put it together however you would like. If it's six months, if it's nine months, you know, we've given recommendations. If it's six months and someone can ask for an extension of three months, we can come up with that. And maybe that, we make that question number eight.
Right. That's what I was just going to suggest. If we could go through the items, and then at the end, we could decide a timeframe for the items that we pass. Is that acceptable to everybody? We'll add that, we'll add that as question eight on the timeframe.
I mean, because I do believe it's doable by, by everyone. I mean, even just being up in New Hampshire this, I mean, Cape Cod this weekend, everything was plant-based. It looked like plastic. Every, every fast food, everything was, so it is doable.
Counselor Franco.
So when you talk to the local big box chains, so just from my experience when I was young and I worked at Bess Eaton, you basically have a list of things that you order, and you tell them the quantity you need. And if you wanted to maybe have paper or plastic straws, it was on your list of things that you could order from corporate. So that's what I'm asking. Do they have these on their list? Are these options they can get? Are they options they already can select from? That's some, that's why I'm trying to ask. Can they get this in six months? If it's not on their list, they may not be able to get this in six months until the corporate company decides that they will put it on that list.
So again, I think we can address that when we get to the timeframe, if you want them to have a longer leeway?
No, I'm asking about single-use plastic straws.
Right.
And if they have an option to do paper, I mean, the paper straws or a plastic straw. And if they don't even have an option to do that, how can we implement something, is my question.
Counselor Heaton.
I think the, the bigger companies have an easier time with it because they have bigger supply sources. And I can speak for hotels, for example. When you go to order things in hotels, you have a very, you have a huge catalog that you order through. And you just, you know, normally the direction is you get the cheapest thing.
McDonald's is usually not like that. It's a limited list, and it's from corporate.
Counselor Heaton, did you want to finish your thought?
And there are McDonald's across the country that do different things. So they're all moving in that direction. I think it's possible.
I agree.
Anyone else on the question of regulation of plastic straws? Seeing none, we will vote on the ordinance, should the ordinance include a regulation of plastic straws? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. So moved unanimously. We are on to, should the ordinance include a regulation of plastic stirrers?
Cups.
Stirrers is number three?
Sorry, I'm on the...
That's all right. So is there any discussion or questions on regulating the plastic stirrers?
It's the...
No, you're on the wrong one. You need to be on the referral.
Thank you.
Yep, turn to 16. Couple more of that one. Any questions on the stirrers? Seeing none. All those in favor of including a regulation of plastic stirrers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. So moved unanimously. Number four, should the ordinance include a regulation on polystyrene cups and trays and other polystyrene products? This is probably going to have a lot of discussion, I assume. Now, did you want to come back to it now?
Sure.
Counselor Franco.
So are we changing the trays to takeout containers, the terminology?
We can address that in the definition of what trays are. Trays, takeout containers, clamshells, we can address the full gamut of that.
Are you requesting that they add clamshell containers?
Yes.
So when we vote, then we will include the clamshell takeout containers?
Please.
So we can address all takeout containers?
Thank you. Any other questions on the polystyrene item? Counselor Bordelone?
Just for clarification purposes, and then it just goes, and other products, basically. So that could be, that's a very, well, I mean, I'm all for it. That's a large span of stuff. So is that going to be more defined, or just, are we banning them all?
We would define that.
Okay. So like a Styrofoam cooler, for example, that I see dumped at beaches all the time?
I don't think we weren't giving... I don't think we weren't getting into what is generally sold at something like Walmart or Stop &amp; Shop as far as those types of coolers.
Right.
We could, if you wanted us to, but...
So these are only other products sold at single-use, like immediate purchase on point-of-sale?
That was the intent.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
But there are, there are some cities, the city of Norwalk, I have a draft example of that. They actually banned all polystyrene products for sale in stores as well. So we can take that as far as you would like.
I mean, I think it's, I don't know what the council's will is tonight as far as that, but I think it's something to look at because it's extremely toxic. And a lot of people don't realize that they shouldn't be even heating out of these containers. And there's no, there's no education on it. They take home the product in it and they're throwing them in the microwave, reheating coffee. The coolers are found on beaches and it does not break down. So I don't know where, maybe this is something we might readdress as the other down the road, but I think it's a huge issue.
So is there any desire to add any other items besides the restaurant-type items that we were originally voting on, including the things that Counselor Bordelone included? Counselor Baumgartner?
I would extend the ban to all polystyrene products. And I've actually spoken to several town residents who have cited the Norwalk ordinance as the example for, or the example for the state.
Okay, so then we have, we've kind of expanded the question so far. So so far we have, should the ordinance include the regulation of polystyrene cups, trays, other polystyrene products, including takeout containers and any, and all polystyrene products? Counselor Parker?
Just a question about the, I understand the cups, the trays, and the clamshells. How are we regulating those people going to stores to buy this stuff? So we're going to tell all the stores to get rid of them? My other question is, where are we going to put this stuff? I mean, we're trying to get rid of it. How are we breaking this down? What was the education on that part? I just want to question that part. We get rid of all of it, they have all this stuff sitting in their stores, they pull them off the shelves. Do they send it back to the company? Do we think about destruction of this stuff?
Well, if you included the Styrofoam coolers from stores, again, once we get into the timeline, it might be that, all right, that goes into effect six months from now, or a year from now. And during that time, they would still be able to sell those products, but then you'd hope they wouldn't be restocking their shelves with it. But again, that, I think we can get to, there's a little bit of chicken and egg with some of these here.
Counselor Heath, and then Franco.
I feel like the question of eliminating polystyrene from stores is a good question for the future, but I think in the initial part of rolling this out, we should try and keep it a little bit more simple and basic and not provoke a response. That's my own personal position.
I'm going to go to Counselors Zepary because he hasn't spoken yet on this issue, and then Counselor Franco and Bordelone.
Thank you.
I think that you're talking about polystyrene coolers and that sort of thing that would be sold in department stores. Now, if you stop the sale of them, you stop the stream. If you don't stop the sale of them, you continue the stream and they will continue to come out. Unfortunately, those products also have a short lifespan. And so they wind up in the waste stream much more quickly and they wind up being part of the problem that we're trying to solve with this ordinance. So I think, I think the comments that were made earlier that we should probably stop them as well are appropriate. And if we're going to take action on this, I think it's important to take action fairly quickly because the contamination that we're seeing is of a, from a very high magnitude. You folks have been in here before and have educated me on this. And I'm, I think we have to respond and stop the stream. So I would be in favor of a prohibition on all styro, polystyrene products.
Counselor Franco and Bordelone?
I think for all the polystyrene, I think we originally started with this and this is what we were dealing with. And then when we started talking about other, we thought, where do we end? Or where do we, where do we stop? Or where should we just start? So there was questions like, are you not going to allow them to sell any type of Styrofoam cups in the store? And then are you going to take away the egg crates in the store and make the distributors come up with other egg crates? And so there was all these other things that we would be talking about and having to really deal with those type of things as well and try and figure out, is this the right thing to be in as well? So I thought we had originally said, this is where we were going to begin and try and start this way and started as a, like a culture change almost because this is going to be a lot for people to take in to begin with. They had, from my viewpoint, I think people had a hard time with plastic bags and there's a lot of pushback and people were very upset with the plastic bags and what was going to happen with those. And it's a whole change. It's, it takes a little time for people to settle in. And then maybe at, my personal opinion is, and then we can delve back into this and work on, but let's start somewhere. And I think if we start opening it up, we might just keep going and it might, this might just, it would take a long time to get something through.
Counselor Bordelone?
I feel it's long overdue for the ban of a lot of these things. I think we're late to the game in a lot of aspects. Growing up, you know, graduating high school in ninety-eight, I mean, drilling the, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle over and over, we used to run around screaming it. And the fact that we're still at this point where we're using all these materials and yet this amount of time has lapsed and the high risk of cancer and disease that we're finding and that we're finding related to this. And then we went BPA-free. And then we're going to probably find out that BPA has probably also got another chemical in it down the road that we'll find out. But I understand what Counselor Franco is saying and I support what Andre, Counselor Baumgartner and Counselor Zepary are saying. Because it, you know, then you start thinking about floating devices like life jackets. I mean, there's foam in there that some of it is, so it, I could see going either way with this. I definitely think, a lot of people see those Styrofoam coolers as single-use. So if the will of the council wasn't to do anything on the other end, I would, I would like to at least include the coolers because people use them one use. They pick them up at the gas stations and then they drop them at the beach and they're everywhere. So I would like to see that. Or something, the six months for the, as it's stated here, but maybe the other regulations might be a year. So we can define that more, get something moving, and then revisit it.
Mr. Reiner?
I was actually going to suggest something along those lines of maybe if there's uncertainty on how far we go on the, you know, styrene products, maybe it's, we define it as the single-use products.
Correct.
The cups, the coolers, the foam trays, the clamshells. So maybe the way we kind of wrap that up is going to single-use Styrofoam, as a suggestion.
Counselor Parker, and then Zepary?
This is not, people can still go in the store, buy the polystyrene. Or are we taking that away, is that the, all of the council? If they go and buy a packet of them and use them at home, are we including that? Because that's a single-use too. So we'll have to tell them to pull them off all the shelves, all the department stores. That's, I just want to make clarification and give them heads up because then I don't think it's going to be a six-month thing.
Counselor Zepary?
I'm a little concerned about single-use as it's a nebulous term. I found myself, I shop at DXL, by the way. They sell things my size. And I bought some things there and they, they gave me a plastic bag. And I said, oh, don't I have to pay a dime for the plastic bag? And they say, oh, no, this is not a single-use bag. They made it a mill thicker. So it qualifies as a multi-use bag. But the fact is that once I got home, I didn't have any other use for it. It's going into the waste stream. And I think that's what you're going to find when you, when you qualify things as single-use. I think even the take-home containers could be characterized as a multi-use product because people could reuse them. I think if the polystyrene is a problem, if we have, we have material that's breaking down, if we have material that's cluttering our oceans, I think we should do away with that material. And this is where the rubber meets the road. Sure, there are state and national acts, ordinances and laws, but the rubber meets the road in the town because this is where we're dealing directly with the people and with the local businesses. So I think, I think that it would be good just to put a lid on polystyrene products. Even the life jackets, I know there are docks. You used to go down on a dock in the flotation devices where polystyrene cylinders are, big blocks of polystyrene underneath the floating docks. And that's how they floated. And they lasted a long, long time. But ultimately, they go into the waste stream. And that's what we want to curtail. The urgency of it is beyond even what Counselor Bordelone was talking about. You were talking about having a credit card a month that we each ingest because of the plastic in the waste stream. The effect on the wildlife in the oceans is terrible. So I think that we should be moving ahead as, as quickly as we can to try to reverse this on a local level. And hopefully, our efforts will be repeated in other towns across the country.
Thank you.
That's the end of my opinion.
Okay, so so far, I'll just recap where we are with this. So we have, should the ordinance include a regulation on polystyrene cups, trays, all takeout containers, and all single-use polystyrene products? Counselor Franco?
If we're going to widen the scope now, I'm going to need more time to research some things then.
Counselor O'Gree hasn't spoken yet.
You know, I think that we've, we've asked the committee to work on this and I think we need to accept their guidance somewhat. I think that what we might add to this that would make it feasible is that this should be reviewed every twelve months. And if there's modifications that are needed from the changes that are going forward, that those would be made. But, you know, we need a starting point. We asked this group to work on it. They've done the research. We have not. And we're probably not going to be any smarter about it in a, in a period of time because I don't know what we're really going to study. But I think that if we could just put a provision in there that this, basically, we're saying to everybody, this is a beginning and, and we'll have this as a guideline. And in twelve months, it would be reviewed. We'd then know what, what the impact has been on business, how many people seem to be going along with it. I think if you, if you look at it, like when, when they first said, no more plastic bags, for a while, you saw people walking out of the grocery stores with stuff on their arms. Now you see everybody going in with their bags. It just takes a little bit of time for people to get used to things. So I think we have a very good beginning here. And I appreciate your time and your effort. And I'm comfortable with what you're sharing with us tonight. I just think if we put that provision in there, that it will be reviewed on an annual basis. We're all going to learn. We'll have different ideas. But tonight, we're not, we don't need to be recreating these. We need to give it a little time and see what, how it goes forward. And if we upset somebody terribly, they're going to come in and talk to us and we're going to learn more that way. So I would suggest that we go forward with these, pretty much accept what's here, and then let's learn. So I'm very comfortable with this. As I said, I appreciate the time that's been put into it. I think we're taking a great step forward for Groton. And we've got to depend on each other to do this. So I would ask you each to pass these and add the provision that I'm suggesting.
Okay, so if we would, if we would add or revise number four to reach, should the ordinance include a regulation on polystyrene cups, trays, and all takeout containers? If we voted number four that way, and then for number eight, which includes a timeframe, we could also add the revisit annually provision. Is there any objection to the way I worded question four, to include the takeout containers?
No, that sounds very sensible.
Counselor Schmidt, thank you. Okay. So, so I'll read it one more time. So should the ordinance include a regulation on polystyrene cups, trays, and takeout containers? Counselor Bordelone?
I would like to add Styrofoam coolers to that.
I think we are hearing objection to that.
That's fine. I'm just putting it on the record that I think Styrofoam coolers are washing up on beaches and people are, I mean, we don't have to go crazy with all of them right now. But living on a coastal town, people go to the beach and they're bringing those Styrofoam coolers. I would like to add Styrofoam coolers to that. I think that's a doable object.
I agree.
So...
And me three.
So I would just say that I have seen recently a Coleman cooler that is biodegradable, that is designed to take the place of the Styrofoam cooler that's out there on the market already. Okay, so we have a request to revise this to say, should the ordinance include a regulation on polystyrene cups, trays, takeout containers, and Styrofoam coolers? Is the language that four of us are in favor of at this point. So does anybody want to discuss that further before we call for a vote? If, Counselor Heath?
So then we would have to go into stores and identify it on the shelf. How would we enforce that? Any, is it any different than how, how the straws or Styrofoam cups from Dunkin' Donuts would be enforced?
I imagine I'd get an email from a council member saying six months or whatever the timeframe is later and X store still has a Styrofoam cooler on their shelf. And, you know, whoever the enforcement body is, which I think we'd said is going to be code enforcement, and we go in and talk to the manager and let them know, hey, you got some Styrofoam coolers on your shelf and they shouldn't be there anymore.
Counselor Park?
You're saying not to have these in grocery stores? I just want to clarify that, that besides the businesses that we're talking about, we're going to go into the grocery stores who buy in bulk.
Gas stations.
And gas stations and other places. I just want to confirm that we're going to go out and reach out to all these people. And how many businesses are there out there like that? I just want to clarify that, put that out there.
Anyone else who hasn't, I think everyone's spoken. Counselor Baumgartner, did you want to speak on this particular thing? Counselor Bordelone, and then Franco?
I just think, yes, I think we should. And I, I feel as, when you go to the gas stations, people go in the package store, they grab the Styrofoam cooler, they load it up with beer, and they leave them behind. And it's, that's a large, I mean, think about how many Styrofoam cups that would be to make that one thing. So I stand behind it a hundred percent, a hundred percent. And I think it's extremely wasteful and people see those as single-use. I think we can be a little bit more responsible and bring a proper cooler, just like we're telling them to bring, you know, to get rid of the Styrofoam cups. I think that's, I think it's doable.
Counselor Franco? Did you want to speak again?
Yes, again, I would just like to sort of stick to what we have. And this is the scope that we had discussed before and agreed upon, that this was our scope. And sort of deal with this first and let the community accept what we have already, like work on this ordinance before we start going down another trail. Because once again, by adding something else, then there's more things to consider. And I am in all favor of reducing plastic and getting rid of polystyrene. And I think all of it is horrible. But once again, I would like to start with what we have and let people get accustomed to this first.
Counselor Schmidt, did you want to speak again? I'm sorry.
I did want to say that I think including all the Styrofoam coolers really changes the whole aspect of it. I think it's something that should be done in the future. But I think that to have a provision, that we examine exactly what is happening with this ordinance after it's been enforced for at least a year, we'll be able to find out what we can do, what we cannot do, and how would be the best way to go about it. I think it actually sends out a signal that we are on this and that the retailers would have to be very careful of what they provision. I would be shocked to hear that anybody... I would be shocked to hear that anybody had a year's provision of anything in their stores or for retail or in their businesses for use in the future. I think that six months is a good extension. And I would be, I think, a person who was stockpiling things for a year probably is going to be out of business very soon.
Counsel O'Bree.
I just wanted to, originally, we had here, should the ordinance include a regulation on poly, say that for me.
Polystyrene.
Thank you. Cups and trays and other...
Polystyrene.
Products. Why don't we just leave it there?
Well, I think Mr. Reiner is saying they need more direction. They need specifics from us tonight. So what I'm sensing, just from hearing people talk, is that we do not have the votes to go for the polystyrene coolers tonight. If I counted correctly...
I don't have any favor of that. I just thought that this said what we're saying, and best leave it be.
So I think that we can take a vote and include the coolers. And then if it fails, then we can come back and have another vote to have just the items as it was written by the Conservation Commission. Would that work for everyone?
Sure.
Yes.
Do you want to speak again?
Yeah. Once again, I'm not trying to change what is written, as Leanne just had read. It says here, other polystyrene products. So it was a vague statement. And we just clarified that the trays would also include clam shells. So here, the other is a perfect opportunity to add the single-use coolers that people are disposing on the beaches. So that's not really changing what is here.
Okay.
Other is already written here as an option. So I wasn't trying to change it.
Right.
I was adding the other.
Clarifying the other.
Correct.
Counsel Schmidt.
And I just want to clarify. I thought that what we were considering was takeout items, different items from restaurants and fast food chains, not from the retail grocery stores or retail stores. That would be my limitation.
Okay. So would you like a vote including the coolers? Or should we just leave the coolers out and go on? Because we don't have the votes to include the coolers. We can call for a vote. I will call for a vote that reads, should the ordinance include a regulation on polystyrene cups, trays, and other, all takeout containers, and Styrofoam coolers? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, please, so I can write. So this is Baumgardner, Granatoski, Bordelon, Zepary. Two, three, so that's four. All those opposed? Parker, Franco, Heed, O'Bree, Schmidt, and abstentions. So that fails. So I'm going to go back to what we had before. Should the ordinance include a regulation on polystyrene cups, trays, and takeout containers? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Very good. We are on to item number five. Now, if you recall the presentation that the Conservation Commission gave us, there were two recommendations that should not be included. The following is one of those. So should the ordinance include a regulation on plastic cutlery? And the Conservation Commission is not recommending that that be included in the ban and be revisited at a later date. Is there any discussion on plastic cutlery? Counsel Bordelon.
I just would like, just for video purposes, the reason why we shouldn't include it. So people at home can understand why we don't want to include it at this time.
I'll defer to the Conservation Commission.
The reason that we haven't included that is that there isn't as strong an alternative at this point.
Okay.
Although I must say, Mystic Marriott has some nice bamboo items that they use at their restaurants. So people, corporations are starting to move. Okay. Any other discussion on plastic cutlery? Go ahead.
So I just would like to keep this at the forefront because there is other alternatives that are coming out. And I just hope that maybe, I'm not sure who would be watching this, so that we can not wait as many years as we have to get to where we are and maybe revisit this.
I mean, I agree with your earlier comment that says we should maybe put a year checkpoint to go back and revisit it, which is what we said here. So let's look at it at a later date. Not that we said, don't do it.
Yeah.
So, you know, we agree on that.
Thank you. All right. So all those in favor of, I'm sorry, Counsel Baumgardner.
Do we know of any municipalities in the state that have extended a ban on plastic cutlery?
Mr. Lofgren.
There's at least one. I don't know exactly which municipality, but I did read at least one. And I think it might have been only for takeout. So anytime you would get a takeout, I think you have to ask for a utensil. But if you do not ask, they don't provide it. That's what I recall.
Okay. Should the ordinance include a regulation on plastic cutlery? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So we have one in favor, Baumgardner, and eight opposed, and zero abstentions. That motion fails. Number six, should the ordinance include a fee on paper bags? Is there a discussion on this? Counsel O'Bree.
I don't think that we should get into that because I think it would create a home of a department. I don't even know how you'd collect the money on the plastic bags. I think we leave that to the establishments to do what they want to do with it. I don't think we want to add to our accounting department at this point.
And as Mr. Dunn said, they have included here, it should be revisited at a later date. So we can include that when we do question number eight. Anyone else discussing the paper bags? Counsel Franko.
I think businesses already know that they can charge for paper bags if they choose to. So this is already something that's out there, and it's not, we shouldn't impose it. Well, not saying we shouldn't, but I don't think there's a need to impose a mandatory fee while they're already doing it. So all that, that's something else I would like to watch in the future as well because using paper and paper products are also have their own issues.
Counsel Baumgardner.
I think in passing a regulation, we'd be simply codifying what is existing state law into our local ordinances. So I think it, you know, in that respect, we should do it, especially given the fact that state law can change at any given time. So say if the state legislature were to make a reversal on that policy, we'd still have that regulation in place at the local level.
Counsel O'Bree.
I hear what you're saying, but that's going to create the question, who's collecting it? Who's getting it? Who's taking care of it? Let the state do what they're doing, and we'll do what we can do without adding more administrative duties for ourselves. That would be my view.
Counsel Heed and Bordelon.
Yeah, I think this is an important component to have because the ultimate goal is to change the behavior of consumers and produce less waste. But that being said, I'm in agreement with Counsel O'Bree that I don't want to yet put an additional burden on the staff for enforcement purposes and that kind of thing. Or, you know, create a little bit more irritation with the citizens. But if we're reviewing this in a year, we should be able to come back to it then and take a look.
Counsel Bordelon.
My only concern is as you add the availability and access, it only grows and we become dependent on it. Just like going to buy soda or a plastic bottle, we're still willing to pay that fee, and half the people don't even recycle them. So what happens eventually is people will start to become accustomed to purchasing paper bags and adding that to their budget like we do when we buy that six-pack of water or whatever. And they don't recycle them. And so there's a bit of a concern there. I guess I keep hearing that there would be a concern as to how this would be collected in the staff. I guess I would direct the question to the staff, what would we do? Or what would you recommend? Or what could we actually facilitate? Or what are other towns doing?
The Conservation Commission was not recommending to collect the fee on the paper bags. But right now, I have no idea how we would go about, I mean, that would be our accounting office, our finance office. I don't know how we would regulate and then collect a fee on paper bags. That sounds like another staff person. If not, that, what is the goal of charging for the paper bags? If it's to get people to then go instead to buy reusable bags? Maybe there's other mechanisms to do that. I think you'd want to revisit what your goal is in having that fee.
So we're basically not ready at this time, it seems. Basically.
I think the fee that's being proposed, something that would then be going to the state?
Yeah, the plastic fee goes to the state. That's why they want it two years.
Yes.
Counsel O'Bree.
Well, I think we'd be kind of defeating what we're trying to do also. If we're going to ask for a fee on a paper bag when we're asking people to use more paper, that'd make much sense. So I think it's, I think we should just let that one go.
So perhaps what we could do is, in question eight, where we're talking about timeframe and revisiting annually, we could specify the cutlery and the paper, the paper bag issue at that point and come back to it in a year. And that would give staff the chance to figure out how the collection would be done, et cetera, et cetera.
Covering the paper bag and the...
I'm sorry. Counsel Heed.
Covering the paper bag and things like the coolers.
Okay, very good.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, because this is really getting belated.
That's okay.
I just don't even understand that, the paper bag. I don't even know why this is on here. Can you tell me what was the logic behind this question?
Asking if we should charge a fee for every paper bag that's given.
Yeah.
So if I could jump in, the idea is to get people away from the thing that uses resource and get people to something that is a reusable item. So rather than moving from, while granted, the paper bag decomposes, it's still something that requires energy to produce each time. And so if you move people to a reusable bag that you can use for, as Mr. Dunn said, three or four years, then the idea is you buy it once and you're not wasting your resources again and again and again, is the point of that. But again, if we're trying to keep it clean and simple, I think we can include that in the revisit at a later date in question number eight. Counsel Franko?
I don't think the people of Maine would agree with this.
Okay.
I think they'd like to see their lumber hats working again and their paper mills.
Franko, and then Bordelon.
So I'm not sure if we need to come back to paper bags. Because I think honestly, if the store was going to charge for them, they're paying probably, it says here, 10 cents a unit. And if they charge 10 cents, they're making, the business themselves would break even.
Well, no, the business is, will charge 10 cents anyway. I mean, they're going to recover their costs somehow.
Right.
The question is, if you add another 10 cents, now all of a sudden, if the business keeps it, they're making a profit on the bag.
Oh, so you're basically saying they would be charging 20 cents?
Right. The fee would be on top of the manufacturing cost paid by the business.
All right. I thought, and then when you did the input meeting and the residents that came out and...
That was a split vote. That was the one that had the most negative, had the only negative vote. And that was 21 to 24. Yeah, actually, there was more no's than yeses from the community that were in attendance, which was a conservation bias community. I should publish that point.
Okay. Counsel Bordelon.
Just let us not forget that at one point, I still remember a time where we only had paper bags. And we didn't have plastic, that miracle thing that came on the market that we all thought was going to save us. And we got away from the paper for a reason. Because trees are also very important in all of this as well. And, you know, we were losing so many trees to disease and environmental erosion. And so making sure that we don't get dependent upon the paper as much is also extremely important. When we look at, you know, people are constantly talking about, you know, being resilient and carbon neutral and having resiliency, this is a way that we get there. And we were already there at once. And then we're realizing the fallout, that the plastic was wrong. And now we're trying to fix the mistakes, I would say, of my parents' grandparents. And we realized that the paper was, you know, also a problem. So it's pretty black and white. It's cut and dry here. I do think this is an issue, and we need to revisit this. And once again, it's on here, but we don't really have a mechanism in place to facilitate a fee yet. So that would be the only reason I wouldn't vote on this. But I feel that we need to consider, we look at all these items, paper straws, stirrers, paper bags is up there just as high. Let's not forget that. Thank you.
Okay. I see no further discussion. So should the ordinance include a fee on paper bags? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Could you raise your hand, please? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, hold on. So I have to read this. So one in favor is Baumgardner, seven opposed, Parker, Franco, Heed, Granatoski, O'Bree, Schmidt, Zepary, one abstention, Bordelon. That fails. Item number seven, should the ordinance include a regulation on plastic nip bottles? This wasn't included in your presentation, so I'm not quite sure where that came from.
This was an item that, excuse me, was brought up at a number of council meetings. So just looking for clarification.
All right.
Yes or no?
Do we want to discuss regulating plastic nip bottles? Counsel Heed.
I'm not prepared to discuss regulating plastic nip bottles, other than to say that that's the number one thing I pick up on the street.
Counsel O'Bree and then Bordelon.
Yeah, I don't think there's really much we can do with this, except encourage our state representatives to put it, make it so that there's feedback on a nip bottle. Because, as you said, every time we clean a street, we pick up more nip bottles than we do anything else. It's just an absolute sin. But I don't think it's our place.
Counsel Bordelon.
I mean, once again, I think it's our place to get rid of all plastic and single use. We need to move towards that globally as a, not just as a town, as a country, as a... But how we get there with this nip bottle, I don't know. I think maybe having a refund on that would facilitate getting the most of these off the streets. And people that rely on the dependability of everybody else being so wasteful and discarding their recycle fee that they pay, and then someone else profits from it, which I think is great, that they're out there doing service, not only trying to live to get these. I would see, I think those nip bottles would become more valuable. So I guess we do need to put pressure to make a fee. Because I don't know how we could, are we, do we have any means to facilitate this as our municipality?
I think this is a whole uncharted territory at this point. And I think Counsel O'Bree had a very good idea in lobbying our state representatives and our state senator to perhaps take action on this. It would be easier for the state of Connecticut to do such a thing than one municipality.
Right. I'm just asking because it's on the list. So I just know if you have any ideas that we can generate. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgardner.
Might add, this would only affect plastic nip bottles, not glass nip bottles. And I know there are many companies who have taken steps to convert over to glass.
All right. Should the ordinance include a regulation on plastic nip bottles? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And again, I have to read this, so give me one second to make sure the vote is correct. So voting on the plastic nip bottles, one in favor, Baumgardner, seven opposed, Parker, Franco, Heed, Granatoski, O'Bree, Schmidt, Zepary, and the abstention is Bordelon. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. So that fails. So we are on to question eight, which is not a written question, so I'll just frame something. And if you don't mind, write down what I say, please. Well, let's discuss first. So we want to talk timeframe. You didn't think six months was enough. Would you like to extend it to nine months? Or are we content with six months? How many, just general consensus, are good with six months? Okay. So then we'll go with that. So then, should, we don't need to change the timeframe. So then the question becomes, should we revisit annually? Should we revisit?
May interrupt.
Yes.
It wasn't solely that it should be a six-month ban or not, but maybe there might be a...
An extension.
There might be an extension option.
I forgot about that.
If a small business was having a hardship.
Okay.
Or something was to come out of a grace period. I mean, I just a thought, I don't, I...
No, you're correct. I did forget about that part of it.
Within writing, so if there was something, but I think it should be very detailed where when you're at the five-month mark, it should be in writing. If not, then it defaults to the six-month. You know what I mean? There should be some type of, and it wouldn't extend beyond that, I mean, obviously, to help if there was a need. Because first and foremost, we want to support small businesses. We do not want to just handicap them. We, we do want this to be passed, but we want to make sure that we're giving them the fair amount of time. And everyone does need sometimes a little bit of an extension. And I just don't want to make it too cut and dry, especially for our local businesses that we rely on and that I fully support.
So go ahead, Mr. Reiner.
So I saw more, five or more hands in favor of a six-month timeframe, so I have some consensus on that in my head. I think we also had crafted something in, I think, the last draft, basically granted the ability to grant a hardship variant if someone asked, that could, if that's the direction you want us to take, we can do that. That could either be given by the town manager or by the town council. If it's given by the town council, it's at least a month-long process. If it's by the town manager, it could happen almost instantaneous and, because John's not here to defend himself, so.
Okay, so then if we, if we said the ordinance should include the six-month timeframe with a hardship ordinance to be granted by the council...
A body.
A body, or... Okay, and then we want to also add in there to revisit this after one year to consider the items that the Conservation Commission had recommended or had asked us to hold off on. So that's where we are right now. So we have Heed, Zepary...
We have a question.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would suggest not including the one year within the ordinance, but just directing staff to one year afterwards and we can come...
Okay.
When you start putting sunsets and timeframes within an ordinance, it, it starts creating strange legal loops that are in there.
Okay.
But I think if you just direct staff to revisit this within a year, I guarantee you the Conservation Commission is going to want to do that also. They've been very passionate about this issue, as have been many other members of the community.
Okay, very good. So Counsel Heed, then Zepary.
When it comes to hardship clause, how do you measure it so that, or word it so that it doesn't get abused?
I, I think some would have to make their case. If we have the general direction from you that that's the, where you want to go, we can take a stab at some language and we can always refine that at the next meeting.
Counsel Zepary.
I think that the ordinance should say that people can obtain a hardship extension through the town manager, but for no more than three months. So it doesn't go on indefinitely.
And then we have Counsel Bordelain.
I was just going to say that, that I think there should be a firm deadline. As much as I hope John stays around, if we had another town manager or something was to change, then we would have a very fluctuating, one's opinion could be interpreted in many different fashions and ways. And that's one thing I'd like to have more cut and dry. So putting a hard stop, they would extend no more than, so they couldn't keep coming back. There would be a three-month extension and it would have to be in writing before the lapse of the ordinance. So you can't just be seven months out and then say, I need a financial hardship. You know this was in play, you had notification. So there'd be, I think it needs to be very wordy and written in a way that is able to be properly obeyed by, adhered to. Just a thought.
Counsel Bum Gardner.
I also think town staff should have the opportunity to report back to the council about the, just report on the mechanisms for enforcement. I'm not sure it's very clear in, in kind of the language we have here, the background information. And I think it would provide a, a great opportunity to educate businesses, you know, six months from now, when it's about to go into effect, what it would look like if they were to violate the ordinance. So providing that opportunity where it can be aired in a public fashion closer to that, again, the date of enactment, I think is the way to go.
Did you want to add something?
No, just that in order to move this forward, obviously, you know, there would be a draft of an ordinance that would come before you. And if you were comfortable moving that forward, there would then be a public hearing to have public input on that draft of the ordinance. And as far as staff reporting back, I think, you know, Office of Planning and Development Services comes before you quite often and reports on many issues. Us, the Conservation Commission, at any point in time, anything that the council is looking for feedback to understand where we are in things, you know, we're always ready to report, do some research. I think in a minimum, we'd be back in a year. If you asked us to come back in six months, if an ordinance was adopted and passed, we certainly would.
Counsel Parker.
You give out weekly reports or monthly reports, so it could be written in and you don't have to show up all the time. But you normally do, but I'm saying just, it could be written in a report.
So you don't want to see me this much?
I do.
Okay, so...
I'm not going there.
So... Did I get everybody? I think I got everybody.
I have one more thing to add to that.
Give me one second, let me just look at what we have so far. Trying to read my writing. All right, go ahead.
I just, once again, think, I agree with Andre that the reporting back, because staff could change, counselors can change, right? So I think that it should be written in there, just that there would be some type of update every six months, every three. And I also agree that for the public knowledge, we had that wonderful presentation, but as we get closer, there might be the need to have another. And you might see more businesses wanting to show up at that time, especially when this paperwork and dialect starts to roll out, giving them an opportunity to come before and speak openly about this ordinance. Even after the public experience, after the public hearing, once we move forward down the line as we get closer at the like five-month mark, just an open discussion. It doesn't have to be anything as formal as the last one. It might be, just like the Groton-Lon Point Bridge where we had some poster boards up, they can come in and there are people available to talk and help them if they needed it. I think that is fair to off, offer to this town because not everybody speaks English fluently. And I just want to make sure all this is interpreted, you know, has, will access in, in other languages so that, you know, we can maybe hit, I know there's a lot of people that speak Middle Eastern, different forms of dialect of Asian. And I just want to make sure that we are taking into account that, that maybe they didn't understand it versus them not following it. So just looking at that.
Okay, so the question that I will ask next is, should the ordinance include a hardship extension of no more than three months? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bum Gardner, Heed, abstentions. So we have seven in favor, two opposed, Bum Gardner and Heed, and zero abstentions. So that passes. So now, I'm going to ask you one more question. I move to recommend for an ordinance, based on the votes we took tonight on the plastics questions. Is there a second?
Second.
Granatoski is seconded by Obrich. All those in favor of moving for an ordinance based on the votes we took this evening on the plastics ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work that you did for the community.
Thank you.
And we are on to 2019...
May I take a break?
We have one more? You don't want to just get the last one done?
No.
No, okay. We need a five-minute recess, please. So we're coming back at 8:38. We're in recess until 8:38. We have one item left on the agenda, 2019-542-4, ordinance to amend ordinance number 286 to reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I don't remember where we are. Counsel Zepary is eager to read though.
Motion to recommend a resolution approving the ordinance to amend the ordinance number 286, reducing the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission from seven members and three alternates to five members and three alternates. I so move.
Second. Moved by Zepary and seconded by Schmidt. Would either of you like to speak to this?
We've spoken on this item a number of times. We had a public hearing on this item. Staff recommends moving forward.
Are there questions for staff? Counsel Bordelain.
I did, thank you. I'm newly up here, so, and I did watch or attend the meeting, I'm sure. I just wanted, just for clarification, and what will change by moving from a seven to five? What, what do we gain and what are we losing?
So we're not losing anything because right now we have a five-member, five full members and we have three alternates. The Planning and Zoning Commission was just consolidated into the Planning and Zoning Commission effective, I think it's July 31st of 2019. We have not had a seven-member, three-alternate commission. One of the concerns that we have is recruiting members for our boards and commissions is quite difficult, as well as managing a commission of that size. We have been working with, we just finally got a third alternate. Tonight was his first meeting, the previous meeting with the other two alternates in attendance. We've been operating with basically a five-member planning commission for some time because the alternate positions weren't filled. When it was at that point, we were having trouble sometimes getting quorums. And even if you have a seven-member commission, then it becomes a little bit more difficult to get quorums also.
When you're consolidating two into one and you're saying you have three alternate, alternates already, it just makes sense to me that you could facilitate seven now.
We could, but there also were not, there were a number of our previous zoning commission members that had no interest in being part of the combined Planning and Zoning Commission.
And as a practical matter, we had our first meeting tonight, five regular members and three alternates. And it was really, really crowded at that table. I mean, practically speaking, there's not room for another three votes. The other thing to consider is that the alternates are expected to attend every meeting, but not participate in discussions and not vote. With more regular members, there's even less likelihood that those alternates will actually have an opportunity to participate in the, in the meetings.
I'm just concerned, I just want to make sure that voices are going to be able to be heard and that the five people will be enough representation of all the broad issues that could be presented versus seven. Also, once again, looking at the environmental aspects and, and not rushing things through in a, in a sense of making sure that, you know, I just, those are sort of my, my concerns. That's why I was asking.
Counsel Schmidt.
I had just wanted to tell you a thought that I had. It almost seems like the zoning group has become insubordinate or inferior to the planning commission people. Because they, although they were a board and planning was a board, when you combine them, only planning survived and the zoning people had to become alternates.
That, that's right. That, that's how the ordinance read, that the zoning commission would be abolished essentially and the planning commission would become the planning and zoning commission. That's right.
But it did seem there should have been a mechanism whereby at least one person from the zoning could have been on the full board as, as a full member, not an alternate.
And that was the way the ordinance was crafted and recommended by the town attorney at the time.
Right.
Counsel Heed?
Those attorneys.
I'm wondering how we would appraise whether moving from seven to five is good, like six months from now, seven months, a year from now, for that matter, if we need to increase it? Like what was the original reason to have it as seven as opposed to five?
I, I think the previous town attorney that had worked on this felt that a larger commission was a better commission. I disagreed at the time and it went forward that way. That would, if we kept it as a seven-member commission with three alternates, that would be the largest commission that we would have. Again, we have trouble getting people to volunteer for boards and commissions now as it is. And, and that, that's also a driving factor for this, to make sure that we actually have people representing on our boards and commissions because if we don't, if it's required to have a certain number and then we don't have that many people, we're setting ourselves up for failure when it comes to having quorums. And in the very recent past, we've had to skip planning commission meetings because we didn't have a quorum.
Counsel Bum Gardner.
The reasons for, you had mentioned the zoning commission members, many of them were not interested in joining the consolidated Planning and Zoning Commission. Was it because of the consolidation or was it simply...
A number of them didn't, did not want to continue meeting twice a month, every month. The zoning commission historically had always met once a month and had some special hearings going through our zoning regulations. We were meeting twice a month, sometimes three or more times a month. And that was one, some of them just, you know what, we finished rewriting the regulations. I contributed, I feel great, time to move on. So there, there were a variety of reasons, but I heard from a number of them that two meetings wasn't something they were really looking forward to continuing.
And perhaps this is a better question for Counsel Heed. Are there any vacancies for the, on either of those commissions currently?
We have five permanent members, two alternates, and last week we received an application and there was another person who was interested. So that would be a kind of, sorry?
Actually, right now you have five permanent members, you have three alternates and it...
Right, so there are no open seats on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Even though you did receive another application. I think the application would have come in after or before the third person was appointed as an alternate because tonight our third alternate attended.
Correct.
We met with him today, gave him overview of what they do.
Counsel Franco.
So we had our public hearing on October 1st and as I recall, there were a few people that showed up and they spoke favorably of this change. And I don't believe anybody spoke against it. But I'm, I'm sure everybody knew about it, that was in that, those type of committees, that if they wanted to come and speak, they would have if they opposed it. Is that correct?
That's right. It's my understanding that all of the planning and zoning commissioners are in favor of this reduction.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Bordelain?
The fact that there's, you know, current applications, it seems as if maybe there could be enough to facilitate a seven-person, I mean, in, in, what, seconding what Counselor Schmidt said, I also agree, it seems, and once again, that was the way it was written way before my time, but to eliminate and fold, it seems as if it should have collapsed and, and took a, a part of each. So, because they have both done a lot for the town and, you know, it should have been, I would think it would make sense to have the minds of, of both sides on that. I don't know.
And that might be something that the council wants to wait as commission members over time resign. You may want to move zoning commission members that are alt, currently alternates up into those full seats.
And what are the, also, is the, as far as the recruitment for this, are we looking at the environmental side or where does that fall in this?
That falls on the council.
I think it's all laid out in ordinances that are online and the, there's a book of ordinances that are posted online. You can go through and look at what each, each commission requires. And this is the new commission, so it would have a whole separate set of ordinances. A whole separate ordinance.
We can go through that on the personnel appointments committee.
Oh, you mean as far as the individual being qualified to serve?
Oh, just, just really like looking at the environmental side of that, making sure we're not, you know, as we change things, right? We want to move towards that sustainability and resilience since we don't have anybody actively in that position in our town. As I feel we should move forward is also making sure that our public works director or directors or assistants or however that's going to be framed also should have that, you know, environmental piece, looking at the big picture, looking 20, 30 years out, being proactive versus reactive. And I just feel that we, I don't know when the, you know, this is new, but we, we talk about plastics, but we really need to look at how we structure our government to prepare for the environmental side of things as well, right down to our boards and commissions.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's added in there or is there some information you, maybe I need to look up to?
That's something that, if you were back on the council after November and you could seek to perhaps be on that committee and then you could make that part of the discussion that you have with each of the candidates, which I think would be valuable.
And that also could be something moved from the RTM as well, correct? If I was on the RTM, I could make a...
I'm not sure. You could do power of initiative, I suppose, but it is a complicated process.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you.
But that's something we could, we could eventually address. So right now, we're just looking at this as it's written, to recommend a resolution approving the ordinance to amend ordinance, yada, yada. So is there any more discussion on this particular thing because we've gotten kind of off topic? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-542, ordinance to amend ordinance number 286 to reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission? We are now at eight counselors as Counsel Obrich had to leave. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. And that concludes the... And that concludes the new business. We don't have any review of agenda items, though, do any counselors have any other?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I forgot to say thank you to you. Any other business before we move to adjournments?
Is national take-back prescription drugs, it's going to be held at the Senior Center and also at the City of Groton Municipal Building from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. So if you have any old prescriptions, you can bring them there...
Saturday.
Yep. On the 26th.
Saturday, October 26th?
10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Where, what are the locations again, please?
Groton Senior Center and the City of Groton Municipal Building. And if you guys cannot make that time, both the Town of Groton and the City of Groton Police Departments do have a drug box inside their lobbies.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Bum Gardner. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:58.